Wow.
Oh, my God.
We're just trying for your voice box. That's what I'm so grateful.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. I'd like to call. We're getting feedback again. Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council on Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. And before we actually get into the agenda, I would like to take a brief pause and ask for a moment of silence for the Maui fire victims. Thank you. And if we could have a roll call by the clerk, please. Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Schizola.
Here.
Councilmember Fertado.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry absent. Mayor Bybee.
Present. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would like to invite everybody to read the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will be reading it this evening if you would all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no special presentations and proclamations this evening and no communications and petitions. This brings us to the oral request portion of the meeting, which is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion of or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And I have one card for inside the council chamber, and that is Sean Mendelson. So please come to the podium. Welcome, Sean.
Good. Some of you guys don't know me. I've started coming to council meetings January of last year. And for those of you that don't know me, I briefly spoke to you over email. I'm a big climate activist, and I started pushing the Climate Action Plan on the city January of two thousand and twenty-two, thanks to Councilmember Lopez for starting that process here as well along with me. I want to commend Rob Eastwood, who stayed on top of it. I've been following you guys. I know the Climate Action Plan was supposed to come out initially spring, and then I know stuff happens in bureaucracy and all those things late summer. It's probably going to be more like October, but I don't want to have what happened in two thousand and sixteen, which a previous council member had told me last year, Liz Gibbons had said that there was a Climate Action Plan in place in two thousand and sixteen that overnight disappeared. And I don't think we're in that situation now. And I've been helping Rob specifically try to get a new staff member. I'm glad that you're not bringing in outside counsel for the Climate Action Plan. And so I've been pushing all my activist friends to bring out folks that can be a really good fit for this city and for a bold Climate Action Plan. I'm hopeful that you guys will do the right necessary steps to move forward. And I again commend you for being part of this process. My thirteen-year-old daughter tonight at dinner said, what's going on in Maui? I told her climate change caused all this horrific stuff to happen. She freaked out. I said, no, that is going to City Hall and take care of it locally tonight. You guys are going to do the right things. I'm here to help any way I can. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anyone else in the council chamber that wishes to speak? Please come up and state your name and your comments.
Sorry. Okay. Good evening. I would like to thank you all for providing this opportunity for other members of the community and I to access our local council members. My name is Hannah Razban. I'm twenty-four years old, and I'm a proud resident of the city of Campbell. I don't tend to gravitate towards public speaking, especially in formal settings such as this, so please bear with me if I make any rookie mistakes. I think I already did. I'm here today to express my concern about climate change. With the deadliest U.S. wildfire in over a century raging in Maui, severe storms and flooding in Vermont, and the destructive tornadoes in Mississippi, all happening within the last month and a half, I'm beginning to worry about myself, my family, and my future children. We've seen some unusual weather ourselves here in Campbell. The heat waves has caused multiple power outages, and even my poor little air conditioner seems to be having an increasingly hard time fighting the heat as it gets stronger and stronger. I would like to ask for your support in addressing the climate crisis we are now witnessing on a daily basis. Little changes such as increasing accessibility to EV chargers, investing in pollutant-absorbing trees, and regulating our community's use of plastic can make a huge impact. We now have a groundbreaking opportunity to protect the planet and to grant to younger members of the community, such as myself, the privilege of meeting our children and grandchildren. I urge you to take advantage of this opportunity and be part of writing a history that the city of Campbell can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate your comments. And is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? And I don't see anybody online that is on for oral request. Okay, so I'll move on to council announcements, and I have a few this evening. I would like to take this opportunity to invite you to the annual State of the City address. Please join me as I discuss the city's recent accomplishments and information on upcoming projects, including Measure O. The State of the City address will be held at the Orchard City Banquet Hall on Wednesday, September thirteenth. Doors open at five thirty PM with the event beginning promptly at six. Please RSVP to Mayor State of the City at campbellca.gov by Wednesday, September sixth. The Campbell Library is offering opioid overdose prevention training on Thursday, August seventeenth, from seven to eight PM at the Campbell Express Library at the Community Center. The training is designed for community members about how to recognize an opioid overdose and how to safely administer the nasal spray, commonly known as Narcan. Further details can be found at www.sccld.org. City offices will be closed on Monday, September fourth, in observance of the Labor Day holiday. Police and emergency services will remain open to the public. The Caregivers Count Conference is an annual virtual event designed for families and friends caring for loved ones. This conference features professional speakers covering wide-ranging topics to support caregivers. The conference will be held over four consecutive weeks on September ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth, from ten AM to twelve PM. For more information or to register, please visit caregiverscount.net. And finally, back to school means sharing the road. As the school year begins, please remember to keep an eye out for young students who are walking or bicycling to school. Pay attention to school zones, avoid distractions, stay alert, take extra precaution when you're behind or approaching a school bus, and be prepared for more traffic and for more motorists making sudden stops. Help make our schools safe places to walk and bike. That brings us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Are there any council members, staff, or members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, Ben, could I get a motion and a second for approval of the consent calendar items one through seven?
I move items one through seven. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmembers Schizola to approve the consent calendar items one through seven. Roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Schizola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fertado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry absent. Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Tonight, we have no public hearings and introductions of ordinances. We have a new business item, which is item number eight, Salary Schedule Update, and that will be presented by our city manager, Brian Levin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This item is before you this evening to ask that you council adopt a resolution approving and confirming the salary schedule. Its intent is to comply with the California Public Employees Retirement System statutory and regulatory requirements, displaying the compensation earnable and publicly available pay schedules to the public. I wanted to remind the council and the public that last year, our council completed negotiations with all of the labor groups in the city that included the Northern California Carpenter's Regional Council, the Campbell Police Civilian Employees Association, the Campbell Municipal Employees Association, Unrepresented Classified Management, Classified Management, Confidential Employees, as well as the Police Officers Association. And with those agreements, the council approved a cost of living increase that would be adjusted to the employee's salary that was effective in July of this year. And so, as is the requirement through CalPERS, we will require to publish a new salary schedule every time those salaries change, even though they were previously negotiated and approved by the council. So the salary schedule before you this evening does so that reflects those new cost of living rates that council previously approved. It does not authorize any increase in salaries other than what was previously approved by the council. And I also wanted to remind the council that you have a desk item on this. So if there's a motion, it should reference that desk item as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the council for the city manager? Okay. If not, I'll open it up to the public and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item. And I don't see anybody online, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion. Any discussion?
If not, I'll make a motion that the city adopt a resolution approving and confirming the salary schedule to comply with the California Public Employees Retirement System statutory and regulatory requirements for compensation earnable and publicly available pay schedules.
Second.
And just to clarify, that includes.
And including the desk item, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second by a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmember Schizola to approve the staff recommendation, including the desk item. Roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Schizola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fertado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry absent. Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Thank you. That motion passes. Next item is number nine, FY two thousand and twenty-two, Annual Report of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for Measure O. And introducing this item will be Al Beto, who is the Measure O Oversight Committee Chairperson. Welcome, Mr. Beto.
Good evening, all mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we are pleased on behalf of the Measure O Citizens Oversight Committee, we'd like to present our annual report. I was unable to attend the July meeting, so representing our committee will be our vice chair, Ann Souza. And before I throw it over to our vice chair, I just want to take this opportunity to thank staff for doing a great job of supporting our committee the last couple of years. They've been very transparent with our information that we need. They've been very timely, and we really appreciate the support that the staff has been giving us the last couple of years. So thank you for that. With that in mind, I'll turn it over to our vice chair.
Thank you. Good evening. At the July thirteenth meeting, the Citizens Oversight Committee had an opportunity to ask city staff questions. And we reviewed the expenditure report. It was a very detailed report, and we found no irregularities or concerns. But we did have a few requests and questions. So here are the requests that the committee had asked of staff. We would like, for informational purposes only, we requested an ongoing comparison of actual expenditures by project, public safety building, and library to budgeted expenditures by project. The staff will send the C O C updated current reports to meet this request in the near future, as well as ongoing and updated reports at each annual meeting. We also requested copies of all vendor contracts related to each project. This was a previous request, and staff will send the vendor contracts to meet this request in the near future. We also requested just that our next annual meeting be in January of two thousand and twenty-four. We'll send out scheduling in December. Questions we had, we, you know, usually meet in January, February timeframe. We didn't meet till July, so we had asked what took so long in getting this. And it was due, staff reported, it was due to a time-consuming, unrelated prior period adjustment in the city's main financials that caused the financial reports to be delayed, and they don't foresee that happening next year. And then the last question we had was the nature of the eleven thousand three hundred and twelve and fifty cent expenditure reclassification in the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. Steps have been taken to ensure it doesn't occur again, and they responded. It was an invoice from a vendor who worked on other projects, and it just got misclassified under Measure O, or part of it did. So we were asked that the invoices be more carefully looked at in the future. And then we also got to tour the facilities last year, which was really nice that we're able to do that. And based on the foregoing review of expenditures and other activities, we concluded that the bond proceeds spent to date have only been spent for the acquisition and construction of the real property for city facilities, as identified in the project list presented to voters. As a result, the city has complied with the California Constitution Article, oh, I don't know what that numbers, thirteen A, section one, and the text of Measure O. Thank you, Ann. Are there any questions of council? Councilmember Lopez?
Um. I know. First off, thank you both for your service and for attending. Give us the report. I'd be curious to hear from staff. I know you mentioned some of the staff response, but just kind of whether there is a plan to incorporate some of these comments and just any other feedback from staff. Would that be appropriate at this time?
Yes, it would absolutely appropriate. You can ask whatever questions are important to you. So I know we have Finance Director here, Fuentes here. He could certainly elaborate. But all the questions about the data they're looking for.
Yeah, more of those kind of procedural.
Understanding budget versus expenditure, although their role is to review expenditures. I think the concern is to understand the context of those expenditure requests and following them through the process. So we'll accommodate them there and also sharing with them the vendor contracts so they can understand the commitments, not so much that they have review or authority over those contracts, but provide some context to the expenditures. And then certainly, lastly, the reports this year, as was mentioned, came out much later because of a material change in our financial records. We don't anticipate that happening in the future, so they should be getting these reports in the in late winter, early spring of the following year.
And the invoice that was misclassified, I, you know, obviously don't expect that'll be a common occurrence, but are there steps to try to ensure that that doesn't take?
Yes. And now, now that we have separate budget items for each of those budgets, the expenditures will be classified directly to the budget item. And before, we were trying to decipher those and figure out is it a police or is it library? Now, each of those expenditures are police, the library, the City Hall project for other related stuff all have separate project numbers.
What was the invoice or the project that?
I'll lean on Will to provide you some more detail on that invoice if he can.
And more just out of curiosity, not that.
Okay. Um, so it will, so the bill and a question was, it was to pay a company who did consulting work upon a couple of projects. And so they, they put all of the, all of, all of their products and all of their work under one statement. So a way to address a prompt in the future is if a company or consultant does work on multiple projects, that they take on individual billings, statements for each project, so that everything that's owed can be charged only to, only to, only to one product. So hires on a note in internal fusion. So lo and a work on each company who may do work on multiple products and will ensure that anytime that they put out a billing statement, that it's only, it's only for a work upon a single and unique project.
Yeah. Thank you. Great. That makes a lot of sense, both how that makes it happen and how we're trying to prevent that in the future. I appreciate it. Thank you. No, no more questions.
Councilmember Fertado.
Let's just make a brief comment. I wanted to thank the members of the committee, three of whom are here this evening. I had the opportunity to attend your last meeting. We appreciate this aspect, which is important to our measure O.
Okay. And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? And anybody online? I don't see anybody online. So if not, I'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I want to reiterate and announce the other committee members and thank them for their service. One is here in the audience, Steve Saunders, who's representing Council District Three, and then Paul Russell, District Four, Doris Quayho, District Two, and Terry Hines, who is District One representative. So thank you all for your service on this important oversight committee. And with that, if there's any discussion and/or a motion?
I'm not sure. Do we need a motion just to accept it? On moves that we accept the report of the Measure O committee?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Fertado and a second by Councilmember Lopez to receive the or to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call. Councilmember Lopez.
Hi.
Councilmember Schizola.
Hi.
Councilmember Fertado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry absent. Mayor Bybee.
Hi. Thank you all, one and all. Thank you, Will, too, for all of your work on that. I didn't mean to forget about you. Next item is unfinished business, item ten, Accept a Grant from Destination Home for Capacity Building Grant to Fund an Unhoused Specialist Position. And our presenter is Community Development Director, Rob Eastwood. Welcome, Rob.
Good evening. Obviously, Community Development Director, not much to add beyond what's in your report. You authorized staff to apply for this grant on May sixteenth. At the same meeting, you accepted a housing audit that recommended the creation of this position. Staff has applied. Destination Home is awarding the city this grant, which will fund an unhoused specialist. This position was also identified in the city's adopted and certified housing elements to identify as the creation of this position. And this position will also support the city's fulfillment to achieve the goals and objectives in the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness that was endorsed by the council back in April of two thousand and twenty-one. Beyond that, I have nothing to add beyond what's in the report. I know Ray Ramson, I believe, is online representing Destination Home. And I'll just say thank you to Ray and Destination Home for their faith and willingness to invest in Campbell on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Are there any questions from council of Rob? Thank you.
I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, um, I know I had some. Could you say, I had some discussion with the city manager, which was helpful, but could you say a little bit more about the strategy behind shifting the this from a contract position?
Oh, great question.
And how that's going to support, you know, the strategy of your.
Yeah, we, I think initially thought we hadn't put much thought into be a salary position versus a contract contract position. In talking with Becky Garcia, who remembers out of Morgan Hill and has the same position, and how they structured it, she had recommended a salary position. Based on our experience of looking for a sole proprietor, which would be through a contract, we've had difficulty finding sole proprietors that can fulfill this type of position and meet the city standard contract requirements. That's to get good talent and feel the same need. It's it's our professional advice that a salary position, free to your time, time limited, will get much better talent for the city to to execute this position.
And it's my understanding that there's no purse commitment from that. Is that correct? From making the change, that there's there's no purse commitment to the city from doing that?
I don't believe so. I'd have to defer to the city manager.
Yeah. And and I take it that Ray and Destination Home was supportive or okay with that change?
My knowledge is raised available online. I know the position of Morgan Hill funded under the same funding source, used the same approach, but Ray can speak to himself if you'd like.
Right, I see Ray raising his hand.
Thank you, Rob. And can you allow Ray to speak?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Ray Bramston, Chief Operating Officer, Destination Home. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to council for your willingness to engage. You have your city manager and Rob. You have an excellent team that's been thoroughly engaged in this work and has really given us the confidence, especially with how active the council has been in the discussion on housing and homelessness, to to make this granted, to make the city, the city of Campbell our fourth capacity building city in Santa Clara County. We're completely fine with it with the changes that staff are proposing, and we're really looking forward to the next three years of partnership. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ray. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item? And I don't see anyone else online, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion. Council member Cuzola?
Yeah, I just really wanted to say thanks to Destination Home, Rob, all the staff, you know, within the Community Development Department. You clearly worked very hard to bring this to us, and I'm extremely excited about the future.
Thank you. Council member Lopez?
Yeah, I have a also want to express my gratitude. Thank you, Ray. Thanks for being here. Thank you for being there for for the the process. I know that this has been probably a couple of years at least in in the making, if not more. Appreciate, you know, Rob and and your team's commitment over that that time, not just this kind of the, you know, partnership in general, which I think is is great. We always appreciate getting grant fundings. But even more importantly, a service I think will truly be transformational that all the residents I talked to see the need for, and I think is is going to be impactful in a city of our size. Well, I think we'll have a very substantial impact. It's great that that it's multi-year funding as well to allow us to maintain that. So with that, I will gladly make a motion unless there's any more discussion. So I move that the city council adopt a resolution accepting a capacity building grant from Destination Home in the amount of $450,000 to fund an unhoused specialist position for a period of three years. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council member Lopez and a second by council members Cuzola to approve the staff recommendation. Roll call. Council member Lopez.
Hi.
Council member Cuzola.
Hi.
Council member Fertado.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Landry absent. Mayor Bybee.
Hi. That passes. And the last item on tonight's agenda is our council committee reports. And who'd like to start? Council member Fertado?
Thank you. Yes, just wanted to mention, I had the opportunity recently to attend the statewide meeting of the California Association of Sanitation Agencies. Is, as I mentioned, a statewide organization of all the sanitation agencies in in the state. It's a very good meeting. Many of the agencies, in fact, do have their own treatment facilities, and as you know, we don't. We and several other cities rely on the San Jose Treatment Facility, and a good part of our budget is spent for that purpose. Our primary responsibility is to make sure that our system is working correctly, that we do proper permitting and approvals for connections. Our overall population is about one hundred and ten thousand residents within the four cities and the unincorporated area of the county. And the number of connections, both business and residential, is about forty seven thousand. So there are very strict state requirements to monitor and be prepared to respond to spills and contamination of the system. The state requires a number of rather stringent requirements in terms of setting up plans, but then also the reporting elements. So many agencies rely on risk management agencies as coordinators for this purpose, which we do also. There's been a greater effort made throughout the state to preserve and recycle the treated water. It is very highly treated. It basically is potable water. But you might recognize it as the so-called purple pipe that carries this water, treated water. It is currently being used, and they plan to use it more for agricultural and irrigation and things of that nature. So there may be some efforts also to ultimately allow that water, as I said, it's very highly treated, to go into the aquifers where further purifies as it's moving down into the aquifers. So it was a very good meeting, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Cuzola?
I attended a couple meetings. First was Silicon Valley Clean Energy, so some pretty exciting news, first of all. Sorry. Okay, so we got a couple new big contracts, a new solar, new battery project. So I'll just read right here in case it's much better word than me. To continue meeting its goal of providing 100% clean energy, the SVCE board authorized two new power purchase agreements, Gray Solar, a new build solar project, and Yellow Pine Three, a new battery energy storage project, each for 15-year terms. With these new projects, SVCE has contracted for a total of nineteen long-term projects, equating the nearly 800 megawatts of clean and renewable capacity and over 1,400 megawatt hours of battery storage totaling over $3 billion over the life of the contracts. When these new steel-in-the-ground projects come online, SVCE expects that in 2030, they will provide more than 70% renewable energy to customers. This will be more than the goal set by SV100, which requires energy generated from 60% renewable sources by 2030 and 100% carbon-free by 2045. So that's pretty exciting news. Another bit of announcements from SVCE. So there are a lot of offers and services that can be provided. You can look on the website, I'll give that in a moment. But SVC has dedicated nearly 90 million towards community programs. There are more than 25 programs in this portfolio, which range from thousands of dollars for customer rebates on efficient electric appliances, funding for EV charging stations, grants to increase energy resilience for municipal facilities, and the Future Fit Fundamentals Contractor Training Program. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's basically with these new technologies like heat pumps, for example, contractors might not be familiar with these new technologies. So this is a program to get them educated on that, and so and then they can go to customers and tell them about them and, hey, these are much more efficient and give them all the benefits and everything. And now now they know how to actually install them. So it's a really amazing program. So anyways, for the public out there, if you want to learn more about the available customer offers and services, please visit sbcleanenergy.org/offers-services. All right. Yeah, so the other meeting I attended was the VTA Policy Advisory Committee. So there was a lot of talk about climate action plans today. So just by chance, this past meeting, there was also a lot of talk about VTA's Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. We got an update, a lot of data came in, and so it was really interesting. And feel free to look at the website, they have the data posted there for anyone interested. But we probably all remember the recent storms, especially people further south remember 101 getting flooded, and it was impassable, and and we had so many downed power lines, and it was just pretty chaotic during that that one series of storms. Obviously, we, you know, it can't be overly stated what's happened in Hawaii, all across the country. So it was interesting to see, though, very specifically for VTA and what's affected right here at home in regards to, a lot of it was flooding, like service stops. If the roads are flooded, if the tracks are impassable, you know, the the service stops. So anyways, it was interesting. I saw a lot of charts. One was, they found out the vast majority of greenhouse gas emissions within VTA are from the fleet itself. So I think that means, you know, we've obviously got to start looking in that direction of like, okay, well, let's, how can we change that with the fleet and reducing those emissions? Yeah, that's it. That was a lot.
Thank you. Council member Lopez?
Yeah, I'll mention a couple of highlights, one which, one, one of which is that last week, I participated in a press conference to, in Cupertino, I, we high school to kick off VTA's, what they're calling their Vision Zero campaign. And it's it's a part, it's incarnation what San Jose and really with national efforts around Vision Zero to try to promote bicycle and pedestrian safety. And so they're timing it with the start of the back to the school season. I mean, you'll see on buses some of the imagery and and ads and messaging and website that they've come up with. So we're there with a few media organizations, received some coverage that I saw on on the local news, and definitely in keeping, I think, with with priorities here. The other thing I went to is last Thursday, the Campbell PD recognition ceremony here in in City Hall, and and really a wonderful event with promotions, retirements, swearing in, including both the retirement and swearing in of R K nine officers, very, very touching, and and awards. So it was really a great just showcase of, I think, what really sets our our department apart. It was wonderful to see the chambers packed with the families who were there celebrating with them. And and I know every one of those officers, the family supporting them is is a big part of what lets them serve our community in that way. And also, as I mentioned, a couple of people finally got to meet a new officer, Sergio Lopez, different Sergio Lopez. But as Chief Burke said, now to Sergio Lopez is serving the Campbell community. And that that aside, clearly, you know, very talented already, sounds like he's contributing a whole lot. So really appreciate that 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 event.
Thank you very much, and I have no reports tonight. And so with that, I will adjourn the meeting.